Welcome to the April 19th, 2022 City of Everett Planning Commission meeting. Kathy, will you please call the roll?
Chair Finch?
Here.
Commissioner Lavra?
Present.
Commissioner McGinn?
Here.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Here.
And Commissioner Ballard?
Here.
Thank you.
Planning Commission meetings remain remote for the time being, although we're looking at potential return to in-person meetings in June. In the meantime, if you are accessing this meeting via phone, please be aware there is about a 10-second delay on the broadcast stream. If you wish to download the presentation materials or wish to comment and need to see the visual in real-time, please visit everettwa.gov backslash Planning Commission. I would like to remind anyone participating to please mute your microphone, or if you are calling in, mute your phone by pressing star six until called upon. Thank you for your patience and stay tuned for more information about following the city council's lead on returning to in-person meetings. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 1, 2022?
This is Commissioner Zalinski, and I would so move approval of the minutes.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner McGinn. I would second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner McGinn. Kathy?
Thank you. Commissioner Chatters?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavra?
Yes.
And Chair Finch?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, reports of members and committees. This part of the agenda is an opportunity for commissioners to share anything of interest from the past month, including conversations you've had, reports or articles you've read, developments or neighborhoods you've visited, neighborhood groups or others, other city boards and commission meetings you attended, or anything you feel adds to the value of our work that any commissioners like to share. Okay, sounds like we're moving on to staff comments.
You've got a couple takers, Chair Finch.
I see that now. Commissioner Chatters?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to thank actually Mr. Stevens Waja and Ms. McCrary for sending me some resources. One of those was a short course on local planning through the Washington State Department of Commerce that went over the basics of land use and planning and comprehensive planning basics, Open Public Meeting Act, intro to the Public Records Act. It was very helpful, very useful. So thank you for that resource, and I think it gave me a lot of good information to, that will be useful as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chatters. Commissioner Atkins?
Yeah, I just wanted to let folks know that about a week ago, I was appointed to the Governor's Council on Homelessness. And so if anyone has any, anything they'd like to share, please feel free to contact me.
Great. Congratulations on your appointment. I guess for my, for my part, I would like to share that if you haven't been down to the riverfront lately, this was a project that was in front of Planning Commission about two years ago, and they are well underway. I think progress looks good. The road is in, landscaping along the road is in, and, and vertical construction has commenced. So I would encourage planning commissioners to go down and, and see the progress as a result of some of the planning work that was done in the commission about two years ago. Anyone else like to share? Okay, Yorick?
Thank you, Chair Finch. Thank you all for the updates. Congratulations on the appointment. Commissioner Atkins, that's very well timed for one of the agenda items that we have today, and glad you enjoyed the short course on planning. Commissioner Chatters, that, that is a great overview and should provide a good foundation. So I'll just give a couple of updates on our work program and progress we've had on some items that you're familiar with and some that you may not be. So of course, the big item for us for these coming years is the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. Since we last met, our scoping process has completed and we closed the public comment period on that. We received a number of comments and got a lot of practice telling our story, at least at this initial phase of the comprehensive plan. Next step with that is going to be compiling those comments and, and other information into a scoping report. We were actually thinking of capturing comments that had been sent into the city from the public on other planning processes that have been undertaken in the last few years that are relevant to the comprehensive plan update process. So things like rethink housing, rethink zoning, I can't remember what the other ones are, but if we've done a broad citywide public comment period that touched on planning issues or would have comments within them, that would be informative to our work, we're going to try to go through those and read them. Obviously, people took the time to make the comments, and so we thought it'd be a good idea to give them a second life. And even if it's a few years old, chances are those comments remain valid today, and it's a way to kind of expand on what we heard with this go-around. And of course, we'll have several other particular comment periods in the, in the update process, as well as accepting comments at any time from anyone on that website, everettwa.gov/2044. We started work with internal teams. So we've developed internal staff teams for the different topic areas within the Comprehensive Plan Update, transportation, infrastructure, economic development, and so forth. And so that's drawing from the expertise from throughout the city administration. And we've kicked off maybe about half of those team meetings. And so we're really gonna educate those folks who are not, don't live in replanning and comprehensive planning into the process, and then listen to all that they know about their area of expertise. So we're excited to, to learn, to share, and to, to get to work on that. Other than the scoping report and bringing this work throughout the city government, the next major step is going to be defining the alternatives. So as we worked through the scoping process, we talked about our initial proposals, our initial ideas for alternatives to study in the environmental review process. The next step is to put some particular detail to that. I believe that our next Planning Commission meeting in May, we will be, come into you with an item on scoping, so a recap of the scoping process. And I imagine that will include some work on these defined alternatives. And then, of course, we will continue and expand our outreach efforts to make sure that everyone in the city is aware of this update process and has the opportunity to weigh in on it. I believe since we last met, the state legislature adjourned and passed a bill that extended the deadline for the periodic update to the end of 2024. It had previously been July 1st, I think, and now it's December 31st, 2024. So we get a little bit of extra time for our update, but I think internally, we're pretending like that didn't happen, and we're still going to shoot for our original timeline, recognizing that usually at the end of any process, time gets short, and we'll definitely be happy with that extension. We're also happy to have seen in the, in the state budget, a fair amount of money for comprehensive planning. So both formula grants that will go to cities based on population for the update work, as well as competitive grants. And I think a big focus for those is going to be in housing. And from what I've seen about the programs and the targets for those grants, Everett should be very well positioned to compete for those. So we'll be trying to do some upfront work about what types of work would be most, would make best use of some additional resources, probably consultant resources is how that would work. And we'll be ready for when the call for proposals comes out to, to, to put in some applications for those grant funds, and then hopefully get some additional consultant support. On the light rail extension, the other kind of big, long-term, ongoing project that we're working on just this afternoon, actually, we moved into the Level 2 screening analysis, which is there was screening Level 1, Level 2, and then the preferred alternative will be chosen for all of the stations and the operations and maintenance facility at the end of this year or early in next year. So today, the elected leadership group, which is our mayor Franklin and council members Arlingo and five or so other members from the Snohomish County SubArea, worked and picked, I think they cut out about half, just under half of the options that had been under consideration for station locations and operations and maintenance facilities. And the remaining options will get a more detailed analysis of full end-to-end alignments, more information about costs, relative costs and performance. So we're excited to narrow the focus into a smaller number. Obviously, the fewer there are, the more, the more effort you can put into it, and the more you can learn about that. So glad to see that process continuing. We're also continued work on the Model Code Partnership, which was a Federal Transit Administration grant process that is working on suggestions and recommendations for language in our zoning code that can best permit and, yeah, permit the light rail guideway, the stations, and the operations, operations and maintenance facility, and leave as little as possible to, to, I guess, tussle over at when we do get to the permitting phase. So what can we do in, in advance to make that permitting phase go as smooth as possible? And then what are the regulations that can best support transit-oriented development and equitable development around the station areas?
Hello?
In, I think, less positive news, Sound Transit did their own scoping process. It was actually an early scoping process for the light rail alignment. They heard a number of comments. Some of those comments were calling for continuing or returning to study an I-5 or a Evergreen Way alignment, rather than going out to Boeing, Boeing, the Boeing factory or Payne Field, possibly skipping a couple stations, possibly putting new stations in play. This is fairly late-breaking news, where staff is not thrilled about the idea because there is a lot of important activity, housing potential and everything in South Everett. Of course, the, the station at, at Boeing Everett serves up to 30,000 jobs, and there's some 10,000, 20,000 people who live along Casino Road and in the areas surrounding those stations. So we'll be tracking that very closely, but just for you all to know that there's going to be some more discussions about potential different alignment. And I think that's responding somewhat to the cost escalation that we've seen that is hurting our financial picture with respect to that light rail extension. Other than that, met with our planning committee for the first time. So this new council has a, a structure. They shifted from a single council member liaison structure to a three-member committee structure. So we have council members. We have three council members, and, and they will be, they will be supporting the planning work and acting as a liaison between the planning, council member Fassi, council members Arlingo, and council member Vogely. Thank you for waiting. And they will be, we'll be meeting with them monthly to cover our work program and everything and act as a liaison with the full council. And maybe they'll take more deeper dives into issues such as you do, before they go to the full council. So we had a full meeting, first meeting with that committee last week and covered our work program, which I, I think you're familiar, well, it's the comp plan update, it's the light rail extension, and then it's a few code projects that we're going to try to squeeze in in between, including one that we're briefing you on this evening, on the housing shelters and, and whatnot for, for homeless individuals and families, the accessory dwelling unit code amendments that we're, we're taking a look at, that we covered at our last Planning Commission meeting, and then those refinements to the chapters that rethink zoning established a few years ago in that list of tweaks and clarifications that we've been working on the list for. So those are kind of the three code projects that we think we might be able to get to this year. And then lastly, we're excited to have the, I believe yesterday, we released a call for consultants, call for proposals on the Housing Action Plan Implementation Grant from the Department of Commerce. So we'll hopefully have a consultant onboard soon to support our work in reviewing all of our development incentives related to housing, such as multifamily tax exemption, density bonuses, fee waivers, and the like. So that's going to be an exciting project. Really look forward to getting that underway, and I think we'll learn a lot from it. And that is more than enough for staff comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Yorick. Thank you for the comprehensive comments. And disappointing to hear that some of the stations are back in potential jeopardy, but I'm sure that those that support Everett will make sure that we don't lose a station. Next is public comment. This agenda item is open for public comment. We do not have any public hearings today. So the floor is open. If anybody would like to speak? Kathy, any public that would like to speak?
Um, we've got two phone extensions here, 0007. I don't know if you'd like to comment?
This is Ismail Mohammed. No, I have no comments. I just want to commend the amount of work Planning Department is taking. I do not have any comments at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got an extension 7946.
Okay, well, thank you. Moving on to agenda item number six, Port of Everett briefing. Today, we are pleased to welcome two staff members from the Port of Everett, Laura Gurley and Catherine Soper, who will provide a briefing on some of the exciting projects and developments the port is working on right now. While they're setting up, I think Yorick would like to make a few introductory remarks.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Finch. And I just really want to thank Laura and Catherine for joining us this evening. It's been on my list for a little bit. Both myself learned a little bit more. We were chatting on the, as, as this was coming up, and this will be, I think, informative to the commissioners, as well as to myself, being relatively new to the city. I know the port is always up to some really interesting projects and doing a lot to lift the economic vitality of the city. I've worked closely with, with Laura on, on some of the issues around the Norton Terminal expansion and waterfront place, and we'll continue to do that with that and others. Other than just being some really cool stuff that's going on in the city that's good for the commissioners and everybody else to know what's going on, we wanted to bring this to you so that you had a little bit of context and background, because we're going to be working on a few of these plans as part of the Comprehensive Plan Updates. You'll see that there's a marine port element is one of the elements of the Comprehensive Plan Update. And of course, the, the work that the port does touches on plenty of the other elements as well, including economic development and transportation and land use. So thought this would make for fantastic background. We won't be getting into the deep end of those documents right away, but this, this background should help when we do. So thank you again, Laura and Catherine, and I'll let you take it away from here.
Great. Thank you so much, Yorick. And thank you, commissioners, for having us. I'm Laura Gurley, Director of Planning at the port, and I have with me Kat Soper. She may disappear from view a couple times. She has bandwidth issues at home, so she's not avoiding us. She's just trying to be, be able to stay on the line. So I am going to share my screen. We did put a little presentation together for you guys, so you can see what we've been doing. And bear with me a moment, and we'll see if this works. And can you all see the presentation?
Looks good.
Okay.
I can see it.
Excellent. So just a little bit of background about the Port of Everett. I think most folks are familiar with us. We're down, office on the waterfront, but we've got properties up and down the waterfront for Port of Everett, or I'm sorry, for City of Everett. We are a special purpose district with our mission being economic development. So we do take that seriously and really try to bring economic development, jobs, industry to the region. And I personally think we do a pretty good job at that. So we are the largest public arena on the West Coast. We are also the third-largest container port in the state, and we rank second in the state for our $21 billion in exports. Most of that is high-value Boeing-related, but, but we, we punch higher than our weight, is what our CEO likes to say, for, for a relatively mid-sized, smallish port. We, and, and we do have time at the end for questions, but if anyone has a, a burning question during the presentation, feel free, and maybe Kath, Kathy Davis can help us monitor the chat or see if someone has their hand up, because I can't see it with my presentation up on my screen. So. This is an aerial view looking south from the north side of our marinas. This is our boat launch here, our jetty landing boat, boat launch, and the terminals are way down here. We do have a, an approach at the port that we call the Balanced Waterfront, where we try to keep our industry and our recreation distinct, so that we have both, and they don't interfere with one another. And it also enables us to do more things in our seaport area that might be, you know, not necessarily as friendly next to a restaurant or something like that. There also is a lot of our revenue that comes from our seaport that supports the recreational waterfront. We consider that kind of our, our seed money to do some of the fun stuff that we get to do. Forging forward during the pandemic, we, believe it or not, we all thought, you know, those first two weeks, oh my gosh, how long is this going to last? Are things going to just be at a standstill? No way. We totally just forged ahead and kept moving. And I think we've had some of our busiest years in, in the past decade. So we've continued on with our seaport modern, modernization and expansion project. You'll see a little more on that in a little bit. The growth and diversification efforts were kind of just in time, because as you all know, with the pandemic, the aerospace industry was hit pretty hard. So luckily, we were able to pivot and diversify not only our cargo handling and the types of cargo that were coming through our port, but also the types of businesses and leases that we were bringing to Everett. Our integrating economic development and environmental cleanups, that continued with the biggest facing project that we have right now, being the new Norton Terminal, or yes, Norton Terminal Expansion Area. That is an environmental cleanup that we have integrated with the development of the, the new cargo expansion area. And we are always working to create new job centers and, and workforce development for the region. Our strategy, this is basically a slide that we'll, we'll talk about all these parts as we go. But we basically try to prepare for the trade of the future and always are looking forward, what are the new trends, what's going to be coming our way, and try to prepare our facilities for that, whether that be a larger ship or a different configuration of, of someone coming into our facilities so that we can accommodate them. We've been investing in our seaport over the past two decades and following the roadmap that was put forth in our 2008 Marine Terminals Master Plan. And all of these things are coming to fruition. It really has been a good roadmap for us. We put over $150 million into our facilities in the last 10 years, and we've brought in a new shipyard. We hadn't had a shipyard in a few years, and they are actually able to handle military vessels, as well as right now, there's a Washington State ferry up in their dry dock, which is pretty weird to see when I look out my window. But it's very cool. And we also did our South Terminal modernization with our new cranes there. And here it is. There, you can see them at the bottom of the screen here. Not sure if you can see my cursor, but those green cranes there, that is our new South Terminal, 100-foot gauge gantry cranes. They can, we brought them in specifically because Boeing's parts were getting larger and heavier, so we needed to be able to handle them in order to keep servicing them. And then, literally just in time when the pandemic hit, aerospace went down, but because of those larger cranes, we were actually able to help with all of the, the cargo backups that you're hearing so much about with the supply chain, and help facilitate keeping goods moving, because we have these two new cranes. It really was just a, a fluke, a fluke in timing, that those two things, you know, aerospace went down, and helping out, handling all the consumer goods went up. But it worked out really well. This is the former Kimberly-Clark site, which we have named the Norton Terminal. This is a model Toxics Control Act cleanup. That's a Department of Ecology program for contaminated sites. You know, even before Kimberly-Clark, this was wood preservation, pulp, all sorts of things that way back in the day, folks weren't so conscientious about what they did in and around the water as far as contamination and whatnot. So Kimberly-Clark did a very large cleanup. And then when the port bought the property, you know, we will, are continuing on with part of the final action, which is basically putting a cap over whatever contamination may be left down there to keep it from getting drained on and having water infiltrated and push any contaminations down into the groundwater. So that is what we are doing right now. And of course, when you put an environmental cap on a site, which is basically pavement, what do you do with that pavement? Let's expand our terminal. So that was another a win-win and a good example of us integrating our, our infrastructure and cleanups together. There's another one, just some action pictures. There's a lot of equipment out there. If you haven't driven by, take a look. The city Public Works actually also has a utility project going right through the site. So we are coordinating closely with your folks and, and, you know, doing our best to stay out of each other's way and play together well in the sandbox. We actually were recently designated a Department of Defense Strategic Seaport, which again was a big win for us. This allows us to be one of the military's resources for moving their own cargoes and equipment. Say they have a, a group of, not military, but I'll say, like a regiment or something like that, of helicopters or Humvees or other equipment that needs to go to New Zealand for an exercise. That, that equipment can come through us. And it also puts us in a position where if the military is, needs to call on us to actually use our facility themselves, we are one of those facilities that can do that. The shipyard, the Everett Ship Repair that we brought in, also lends to that effort because they are able to handle the, the military, the naval vessels, not all of them, obviously, some of them are too big. But it definitely keeps our region competitive instead of having vessels go down to California for repair, because that would be, out of state is where some of the vessels would have to go, or even over to like Ferma Gens over there. So we get to keep them in the region and keep the jobs here as well. As I mentioned before, the supply chain backlog, just by happenstance, we got these cranes up and running just in time. Who knew the pandemic was coming? But it really worked out well. This part of our easing the supply chain backlog, also from a transportation standpoint, we are. we are a part of a short sea shipping route between here and uh BC, uh British Columbia up in Canada. And that enables us to um barge containers directly from here to there or vice versa and take those containers off of the road. Um, basically, you know, as a traffic reduction. We actually, and this, if you look at the second uh bullet, with the pandemic and the supply chain backup and our ability to help with these cranes, we handled more containers in one month in 2021 than in the entire year of 2020. We're not normally a container port. We are normally break bulk and oversized and odd shaped um uh cargo elements. But because of these cranes, we were actually able to uh take some of the ships that were waiting to get to Tacoma and Seattle and offload them. Um, never, never in a million years did we ever expect to see like stacks and stacks of Amazon and Walmart containers on our site, but they're there. And it's it's really been pretty amazing. Um, this is just kind of a snapshot of the things that we that we carried. Um, 572,000 short tons moved in 2021, which was more than double that of 2020. Um, 133 port calls in 2021, which was 40 more ships than 2020. Uh, 400% increase in container volume over last year. Well, I will say that we do not expect that to continue. You know, once aerospace gets back up and the backlogs with all of the cargo issues at other ports get sorted out, the containers will go back to those ports and um and we'll go back to our our aerospace niche and uh our oversized and and odd sized um uh cargoes. Uh, we also just uh of note, we're a recovery port officially. So if something happens, natural disaster, um, and Port of Seattle or Tacoma are out of commission, um, we are the go-to port to uh help continuing to unload all of this, all of the cargoes. Now, moving to the north, um, we're gonna talk a little bit about our Waterfront Place project and uh in and around our marinas. Um, this is our destination waterfront. The uh the waterfront central area is here. You can see there's new buildings in here um and new roadways. And we've been working very hard um to basically develop a destination waterfront waterfront where you can do things all year round. Eat, drink, stay over, work down there, um, whether it be um one of our future tenants or current tenants, and I'll get into who they are soon. Um, but also to recreate, you know, obviously, we have the marinas, um kayak rentals, um, ride your bicycle around, take a walk, et cetera, et cetera. We uh anticipate over 2,000 jobs to be generated and uh about $8.6 million in state and local taxes to be put back into the community. This um, this project was, has been, gosh, over 20 years in the making. This was an entirely industrial site. There was contamination that we had to clean up. Um, and basically, things were kind of fading out. So we had to really think about what we wanted to do with it. And this this vision of Waterfront Place Central was born. And um we have just kept on plugging away at it even through the 2008 recession. And uh and here we are today with um people living down on the waterfront in the the very first um ever uh residential on the waterfront in Everett. So that was pretty cool. Um, this is some of our our public access. Uh, we've got Sainer Wharf up here, which is a a big um timber walkway um right adjacent to our commercial fishing vessels. So it's kind of neat, you're above them and you can look down and then see what they look like. And when they're moving their their nets on and off board. Um, we've got Pacific Rim Plaza over here with Hotel Indigo in the back. We've got a splash fountain in here. Uh, this is where our big Holiday on the Bay event was this past winter with the ice skating rink and um and the craft booth booths and Imagination Children's Museum. Um, this is our Guest Dock Five, uh part of our Dock Walk, uh which is right adjacent to Pacific Rim Plaza. Um, this is our Activity Float, which is rentable. If you want to have an event down there, you can reserve it and um and and have your event down there. It actually has fantastic views right down the main fairway out to the west. So it's gorgeous at sunset. Um, this is part of our Esplanade um on the south side of the Central Marina or uh Sun Waterfront Place Central, the north side of the Central Marina. Um, and we've been working um to bring these things in as we build out this whole project. Um, private and public development partnerships. We've got uh folks who have either bought land directly from us, such as the the residential folks with the um Waterfront Place Apartments. We've got folks who have long-term leases, such as Hotel Indigo. Uh, and we have lots of folks coming in, such as Woods Coffee and South Fork, South Fork Bakery. Um, we've got a variety of new tenants coming, and I will show you a list of those in a little bit. Here we go. Um, so basically, this is a snapshot of some who we have had for a while, but most who are fairly new or um coming up. So here you'll see everything from Bellingham Yacht Sales, um, lot lots of boating related. Bellingham Yacht Sales, Copper River Yacht Sales, Deck FS, FX, FX. Um, we've got the Everett Ship Repair, which is actually down at the terminal. Some new ones coming in, Fisherman Jack's Restaurant. That's being, that building is being built now. Um, that is actually uh in, there's, there will be two um tenants in that building, Fisherman Jack and South Fork uh Bakery. We've got a couple of breweries coming in, Sound to Summit Brewing and Lazy Boy Brewing over here. Um, and and I will make this uh presentation available to you guys so that you can come and look back at all of these and and really get a handle. One of our really neat new tenants is the Freedom Boat Club. It is kind of like an Airbnb, or well, it's more like a timeshare, like a timeshare for boats. So you buy into the club and then you have access to a boat, but you don't have to maintain it, you don't have to clean it, and they they basically have it ready for you when you want to go. So if you've ever wanted to be a boater but didn't want the hassle of owning a boat, sign up with those guys. Um, so here's, um, yes. Yes?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm sorry, my name's Katie Hayes. I'm a reporter with the Everett Herald. Um, the meeting isn't being streamed on uh the city's channel where it normally is. Is there a way to access it?
Does someone from the city want to speak to that?
I heard that too. Jeff, are you on the line? I sent you a couple messages. Unfortunately, I have, I don't have the communication tools.
I can tell it's working.
I I got a couple other emails from folks. So I think Jeff is gonna look into it, run some diagnostics.
Okay, thank you.
And we will, yeah, so we'll try to get that back up online as soon as possible, and we'll definitely make a recording available for folks ASAP. I'm sorry about that.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Can I keep going?
Yeah, go ahead. We will, we will have a recording of this and uh it, I'll ask Kathy, if possible, to to get that up earlier than we normally do so people can catch up right away.
Okay.
You'll just have to start over, Laura, as soon as we get this back up.
Gosh, I hope not, but I will, for you, York, I would do it. Um, so this is just a map of some of the items that I was just uh running, running through in that list. Um, here is our Lazy Boy Brewing and a fish market, which Everett Waterfront hasn't had in several years. There used to be one down on West Marineview Drive um closer to Hewitt. But we are looking to bring a fish market in. We've got uh Woods Coffee and Sound to Summit Brewing coming in here on the corner of 18th and West Marineview Drive. Um, Bellingham Yacht Sales, Freedom Boat Club, Waterflying Boats right here. In a building that we're actually also um will have uh new public restrooms. Fisherman Jack's Restaurant and South Fork Bakery will be in here. And then the Rustic Cork Wine Bar, a spa, cafe, and ice cream shop uh we're looking to put here in the middle. Um, the Historic Warehousing Building, and I'll show you a picture of that in a uh another slide or so, um, which we've relocated out here to the west end near Boxcar Park. Um, that is going to be a whiskey bar and coffee shop with some meeting space upstairs. And uh and then we'll build out on the west side a a performance venue um as well. So some really neat things coming up. The pink outline you see is what we call the Wine Walk. So we're looking at bringing some wine tasting rooms in. And we're just getting started looking at three new buildings in this area to basically draw people around, you know, pass, well, stop at Lombardi's if you want to. Um, but through the Lombardi's area by Port Gardner Inn and then coming around, having another destination here as you're on your way out to Anthony's and Woodfire and all the businesses that have been established out there. Um, our developer uh has been selected for Phase Two, which will bring in the major office tenants um as well as structured parking and residential uh mixed-use buildings and retail. Um, so that's really exciting. Um, it's LPC West, uh Lincoln, Lincoln Properties Corporation, I believe, is what it stands for. Um, and I will show you some of their concepts in a little bit. Here we've got Parcel A8, which was on um, this is the dual, the dual concept with Fisherman Jack's and South Fork Bakery, some outdoor dining, which would be right on the Esplanade, looking at the marina. It's under construction. We've got um foundation in, we had to do a lot of ground improvements there, but now things are going vertical, so that is really exciting. It's basically between the water and the apartment buildings. So very visible if you're uh, if you're down in our neck of the woods. And that is anticipated to be completed this year in the summer, so keep an eye out. Uh, another one uh right nearby, this is uh Parcel A17, which is where the restrooms and all of those boat-related the um businesses that I mentioned were going to be. Um, so that is again, under construction. Uh, all the ground improvements are complete, and that will be open this some, this summer as well. This is the Port Gardner Landing Building. This is the corner over um at 18th and West Marineview Drive. So Lombardi's would actually be behind here and the Port Gardner Inn behind to the left. Um, this is Sound to Summit Brewing and Woods Coffee. There'll be a drive-through, and as you can see, we're really trying to keep the the outdoor um space um welcoming uh throughout the development. But this was an interesting one that we had several iterations of to to have a kind of a courtyard area that can be shared by both the um Summit Brewing and the the coffee shop as well. Again, coming in mid 2022, it is under construction. Bulkhead Segment E, so if you look at the aerial on the bottom, this is the, one of the new apartment buildings. This is Lombardi's right here. There's this little bit of bulkhead in here that is very, very old and in desperate native repair. And we actually um won a $1.5 million grant, I believe it's through the PSRC, the Puget Sound Regional Council, um, to replace that um that bulkhead because it supports West Marineview Drive and the sidewalk there. So we definitely need to do that. It is the last piece of bulkhead that the port has in this development that needs to be replaced. So um that, it's kind of nice to be able to put the final piece in the puzzle as far as all the bulkheads go. And um and we are partnering with the City of Everett. They um because of the grant being through uh federal DOT dollars, there has to be a a construction administration um local contact, and that is uh City of Everett for us. And this is our second phase that I was mentioning that we partnered with LPC West on. Um, this is the largest mixed-use phase that we've got. And um it will have retail, um, office, uh, as I said, structured parking. If you look on the right, these are some of the concepts for their marketplace and some of the residential, um, a very, very welcoming space. The concepts that they showed us really hit the mark when we were um searching for a development partner for this phase. They are based in Texas, but they've got local offices in Seattle, so we're working with those folks. Um, and they, one of the things that sold us uh on them was they are doing a big redevelopment project down at the Port of Vancouver, USA. And uh we talked to the Port of Vancouver and they've been very, very happy with them and my team. So we feel like we're in a good, a good place with our new park here. Um, this is some of the improvements that are coming up. Um, that second phase sits right here in the middle and includes this up here as well. But we've got to get the roads in, the roads and the utilities. So we will be working on the loop road that goes all the way around. You can see we have some of it done and over here, but we've got to get the rest of it looped in so that um we can have utility connections and whatnot. And that is a uh quite a process as far as the ground improvements that are needed. We have very um large preload areas where we have to pile up material to basically squeeze out all the 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 liquid in the soil below and get firm footing to start um building things on. Here's our Historic Warehousing Building, and you can see some of the concept ideas on the right side. Uh, they very, very much are committed to the historic uh aspect of the building. They want to basically create a a a, call it a usable museum, if you will, um, in having a lot of historic elements on the inside, history of Everett. Um, and basically, so if you are in there having a cocktail or a cup of coffee, uh, just look around you and it's um, you you're in a museum, basically, with uh all the things that they plan on curating and and showing, showing off and restoring. So their concepts are really, really neat. And uh we will be actually preparing the building um to get it usable for the tenant. And then they will come in and we would do things like replace windows and whatnot. And then they'll come in and put all their their touches on as far as the woodwork and cleaning it up and all of that. Um, the next phase after, and this is in the future, we don't have, we don't have a timeframe exactly for for this yet, but Phase Three would be housing at the very, very west end um over here adjacent. This is our new loop road that I was just showing you and the redevelopment uh and completion of Boxcar Park. Uh, this is the Warehousing Building. You can see we we intend to put that um entertainment venue on the uh side of it so that folks can gather in the park for a concert or other events. Um, Jetty Landing Restroom, this is the restroom that used to be at our boat launch, which, if you've been down there lately, is not there. We demolished it and we are working um uh with an RCO grant, a Recreation and Conservation Office uh Commission grant um that we went in with the city and the county as uh co-owners of the property to replace the uh the restroom, uh make it a little bit bigger, have some family-style restrooms. So if you have all your kids in tow, you can all just go into one room and lock the door and do what you need to do and uh, as opposed to having men's and women's, which we will also have, but it'll be a mix, a combination of them. And that's gonna be uh open this summer as well. Uh, some of the events, we definitely had to pivot during the pandemic. Um, we, in a typical year, we would have had about 75 or more waterfront events, but obviously, we had to change a lot of things. What used to be a bring-your-blanket-and-lawn-chair-outdoor-movie experience became drive-in movies, which were in super high demand, and they sold out, I think, every event, if I recall. Um, we only had 25 events in 2020 because of the pandemic, but by 2021, we had figured some things out to enable us to keep hosting events. And the majority of our events are free, which is great. So we get a really good public response, um, people coming down to the waterfront. And for this year, we anticipate uh getting back up into that, you know, 75-plus range um number of events for the year. Um, we had a a big success in bringing back Jetty Island Days in coordination with the city and the county and pooling our funding to make that happen. Um, that was very important to the community because that is such a popular place to go. Um, if you haven't seen our Contoons Floating Concert, it's pretty cool. Um, this past year, we had a guy with steel drums floating around the marina and uh just some funny events. Kat Kat's team is amazing in some of the things that they find for us to have down here. Um, this is Riverside Business Park is actually an example of what the port does. We had an old warehousing mill site, we cleaned it up, we brought in new We brought in new tenants, FedEx, Amazon, um, Safran, which is a French aerospace company. Um, brought them in, they built their buildings, um. Sold, sold the properties, uh, redeveloped the, the trail system out there, did all the landscaping. And then turned that public access over to the city. Um, so our, our hands are pretty much done at Riverside Business Park. But um, it was a, a prime example of the port's um, economic growth potential for our region to bring in um, facilities like this. And we actually won um, the Outstanding Job Creator Award for the redevelopment from the Washington Public Ports Association. Which was pretty exciting. Uh, Baywood is another one, um, where we brought an old contaminated um, timber products site back into productive use, uh, again with partners. Um, the port was responsible with the Department of Ecology for cleaning up the shoreline, removing um, contaminated uh, wood waste and uh, a lot of concrete and asphalt rubbles and some old piles. And basically creating a more natural beach habitat all the way around. Um, we saved some existing wetlands that were in there. Um, and we planted, 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 planted tons, thousands of plants. And uh, things are, are really coming in very well. It's flourishing. As part of this development, there is a public access trail that goes all the way around the site and back, um, back connects to the Milltown Trail along West Marineview Drive. Um, we did then sell the property to uh, a developer and they are working on uh, their building. And um, they will be responsible for moving forward uh, from here with um, with more jobs coming. Now, this is a little, uh, one that's a little bit different for us. This is the old Behringer Strawberry Farm. Um, this is actually in the county, but it's a port-owned property. And we have partnered with a company called Wildlands. I believe they're based out of California. Uh, and we bought this property probably thirty years ago with the intent of doing something with it. Um, relative to environmental restoration, and that is what we are doing with them. So we are creating a mitigation bank, which is basically a salmon restoration project. That is accredited through a myriad agencies, um, state uh, and federal. Um, to basically prove that it will be of an environmental benefit, especially to ESA-listed salmon. Um, Chinook uh, specifically. So that then if someone else somewhere in our assigned region for the bank um, has a project that they're going to have impacts that they can't mitigate for, they can actually buy credit from this bank. So basically, um, they, they are kind of, think of it as paying into uh, restoring this property. Um, which is huge. It's three hundred and fifty-three acres. It's right near the Quaalude Restoration Site. Um, and our, our estuary in the Snohomish River right now has more restoration going on than anywhere else in the state. If you put all the chunks together, it's, it's really quite remarkable. And hopeful, hopeful to, you know, really have an impact on our, our ecosystems here. Um, and I feel like I talked a lot, but I welcome any questions. And um, Kat has a lot of information in her head if you're looking for statistics or anything like that. So we're both available to you for anything you have.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
Any questions from commissioners or comments I should ask?
Well, you guys are an easy crowd.
Yes, Commissioner Lawfro.
Hi, um, thank you. Um, yes, very interesting. I, several people have asked me what, what type of business is going in there at that Baywood site? Um, so.
So as far as I know, it hasn't been announced. It's not going to be our tenant because we sold the property. Um, so when they are ready and have someone under contract, um, they will make some sort of an announcement.
Okay.
Any other commissioner questions?
I had a question. Um, on the, on the Baywood property and, and the Riverside Business Park property. Um, why did the port, I guess the broader question, why does the port or how does the port select which properties to sell as opposed to uh, lease on a term or a, a long-term ground these spaces?
That is a really good question, and I don't want to speak out of turn. And Kat, please do speak up if you have um, insights on this. But I, I, based on commissioners at the time and leadership at the time. Things shift, you know, across the years as to whether or not we plan to retain, you know? If, if, if we don't have enough land in our portfolio, we don't want to be selling it. If, if we're um, got a bunch of new properties such as like Kimberly-Clark right now that we have to put a lot of effort into. That might um, cause us to perhaps sell something else somewhere, just to keep our portfolio kind of balanced and at a manageable size. But Kat, I don't know if you have um, any additional insights to that?
No, I think you answered that perfectly. So the commission by their vision and direction, um, and work through that as part of our strategic plan. So a lot of these properties um, and projects we take on, you know? We don't just take them on willy-nilly, you know? There's a lot of planning and process that goes into what's the vision, um, how does this work for our three business lines? Um, but with Riverside, you know, our work there was done, like Laura said, it's really what we do. We took a Brown's Field property, redeveloped it, put it into use and um, sold it. And then that allows us to look for other opportunities and do the same thing elsewhere.
I see. So selling Baywood and Riverside were part of a broader, longer-term strategic plan? So it was always contemplated you would be selling them?
Correct.
Yeah, great. And then, um, you know, it was a, it, thank you for the presentation. It was very thorough, um, and, and obviously very comprehensive. Um, I, I would say that, you know, you, you're in a safe space here with friends. Um, your presentation was wildly positive. Um, I know from personal experience that, um, you know, uh, undergoing real estate projects isn't always easy. So what do you see as the kind of near-term challenges to executing your current vision?
Gosh, we have so much going on right now. I think one of our biggest challenges is manpower. Uh, you know, keeping up with um, all of the opportunities knocking on our door. And that's kind of, like you said, that's a very positive spit, it's a positive problem to have, but it is definitely a problem. So we, you know, our, our staff size is limited. We have hiring, we are hiring. If you know of anyone, check out our website. Um, but um, but I think that's probably one of our big, biggest hurdles right now. Is the businesses and opportunities are knocking down our door and we just are trying to keep up. It's, it's really pretty amazing.
Yeah, that makes, I think you, you're not alone in that for sure. I think there are a lot of people experiencing that. Then one final uh, question for me before I move on to Commissioner Ballard. Um, in leading up to tonight's meeting, um, in talking with folks uh, about the um, agenda items. I received a number of comments about kind of public interaction and access to the Everett waterfront. And um, I, I often receive questions as to why it's so different than, say, for example, Kirkland, a much smaller size with a frankly, a lot less interesting waterfront character, in my opinion. We've got saltwater, we've got, uh, we've got freight activity, uh, we've got residential and, and some retail down there. Um, what do you see as uh, the, the unrealized opportunities to create access to the Everett waterfront for the general public?
Oh, that's an interesting one because we, um, because so much of what we do either triggers public access requirements through the city. Or, you know, we recognize that there is an opportunity on the property to do something like that. Um, we, we have ideas that are very, um, call them scientifically, uh, long-term monitoring kind of projects. And this, this goes hand in hand with, um, you know, how do you create public access on a river? That's constantly changing and that's been predominantly armored. Whether it be bulkheads or rock for like the last hundred years. You know, to create a, a public access that's safe, that maybe the mud's not contaminated. A lot of some, well, I shouldn't say a lot, but some of it is. So, you know, we have to keep these things in mind so that things are safe. And people aren't going to get swept away in a river. But we, we definitely have our eye on things. Um, and we, we have some plans in the future that are going to be very long-term, long-range. But there's a lot of scientific study and environmental study that has to go into them before we can really say that we're going to do them. Because we, we don't want to say we're going to do something if we're not sure that we can actually implement them until we know.
Yeah, I think that, that makes good sense. I, I know that um, the, the bridge spanning West Marineview Drive to the Northwest neighborhood has been overwhelmingly popular.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it is always being used. And I think that more access points to our central waterfront, uh, for pedestrians and other forms of transportation, the better. So I, I would say from an economic development standpoint, I look forward to the new businesses going in. Um, despite the level of public subsidy. And I think that that will only uh, increase the popularity of our central waterfront. Commissioner Ballard.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Um, I, thank you for the presentation. It was wonderful. And the, the ports of jewel and the work you've done there, down there on the, the waterfront places is just outstanding. Um, I fortunately can walk um, over that bridge on a daily basis. Um, so my question, you kind of stole it, uh, Commissioner Finch, was the access and how do we get that? Not only for the general prop, uh, population, but also the less affluent population. Communities that are not, you know, not so close or not so affluent to be able to get down there, whether it's uh, absolutely more access points, but um, hopefully with more uh, more units down there that maybe there's enough for more bus, busing or a trolley or, or something like that, some, some kind of coordination for uh, uh, access and to get down there. And then I did have a question and I, I think I probably know the answer. But is there a, any component of affordability or workforce housing in any of the units that are going down on the port?
Um, I can't speak to the affordability aspect, but I know we are looking at, at work, live-work units for some of them with, with uh, our current partner. Um, not sure if that's going to um, pan out in their model, but it is something that is being talked about now. Um, and then just to speak to your, your previous uh, comment about access. There is one bus stop now and there will be at least one more out at Boxcar Park when we're at Build Out. So, um, and we've been in, in, you know, communication with Everett Transit and Community Transit about, you know, how quickly those things should be growing and being served as far as the frequency of the route and whatnot. So, um, keep an eye on that as well.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, any additional commission questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Chatters.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gurley. That was a, a wonderful presentation. Uh, I just wanted to mention that I, I am a literal Sunday driver in that I go out on Sundays and drive around the city and the port is one of uh, my favorite places to drive. I'm so excited about uh, the, the variety of tenants that are coming in. Um, the Wine Walk, that's going to be really interesting. And I think that the plans that you have on the horizon, uh, they just have so much potential to make it a regional destination that really brings cultural and economic benefits to the entire area. So thank you so much for the presentation. Uh, that's all.
You bet. Thank you so much for your comments.
Okay. Well, thank you for joining us this evening and for your presentation. Um, and uh, we hope you'll come back soon and give us an update in a number of months.
You bet. Just say the word and thank you for having us and uh, have a good night.
You as well. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is shelter and housing for homeless individuals and families. Uh, this is a preparatory briefing on code amendments related to homeless shelters and supportive housing.
The slides up and Becky is gonna start us off here. And I think that's the wrong side swap.
There we go.
That look great?
Yep, that looks good. Um, thank you, Commissioners. Becky McCurry, Long Range Planning Manager. And um, as Chair Finch mentioned, we're here to just introduce this topic. Uh, and see if you have any questions. And um, we will, uh, we will be back to you in the next couple of meetings also, and we'll talk about that. So today, we're gonna explain the scope of the project, what it is, what it isn't. Talk about the policy guidance. And then we wanted to go over some recent city ordinances related to this type of housing. We are doing this primarily, why it's coming up is because there was recent state legislation that is requiring all local jurisdictions to make sure that we um, have opportunities for, for these types of housing. And then talk about potential code amendments that would be coming forward to you next month. Next slide. So here it is, uh, here are what it is and what it isn't. The House Bill twelve twenty has a number of provisions in there related to housing. Uh, and specifically, it has the requirement that we, uh, city has to allow emergency shelter, indoor emergency shelter, indoor emergency housing, transitional housing and permanent supportive housing in certain zones. And Yorick will cover the specifics of that and why we're here. So uh, we are mandated to, to do this work. We also are going to include provisions under Senate Bill fifty-two thirty-five. Which is prohibits a city from limiting the number of unrelated people who may occupy a dwelling unit. Um, this is, this is, can be related to homelessness in terms of making sure that um, people can have a place to live, potentially renting a room. Uh, in our case, we do have a, a limit, a number, and it's in our definition of family. So again, Yorick will talk about the specifics of that. What we're not going to be doing is talking, uh, doing anything related to market rate or affordable housing specifically. Or any group housing. We have several um, categories of group housing in the city's code or any state license housing. And finally, there's another bill, House Bill thirteen seventy-seven that requires cities to offer density bonuses for residential development on property owned by religious organizations. We need to take some more time to analyze that bill, potentially looking for uh, guidance from Commerce on how uh, others will, are implementing that. So that will come back at a later time. Next slide. Next thing we'll talk about is the Policy and Action Plan Guidance. And there are several housing policies in our comprehensive plan in the housing element. And there are a couple of specific policies and an implementation measure that speak to this topic. First one, four point eight point eight is supporting local and regional efforts to prevent homelessness. And this includes making sure that we've got that range of housing op, options in the support efforts to move homeless persons and families to long-term financial independence. The next policy there, fourteen point eight point two says that our zoning code must provide those opportunities for special needs-type housing. And you can see the list there, but specifically does talk about support, supportive housing and temporary housing. And that we should continue to monitor and update definitions, which is exactly what uh, what this project is going to be doing. Um, we're proposing and, and add those types when, when we need to. And finally, the implementation measure uh, in that chapter under thirteen is making sure that we identify zones in the city where it's suitable to place emergency shelter facilities. Next slide. You might recall recently, the Rethink Housing Action Plan did contain a strategy that calls for the city to develop a homeless housing program. that calls for the city to develop a homeless housing program. And that would be to, uh, specifically work with our community partners to address current and future needs of our unsheltered community members and should include some prevention strategies. So that will be coming out of our the lead on that will be the Community Development Department or Division, and they will, uh, will be doing that in concert with them. So this work is sort of helping to lay some foundation for that. Next slide. The Pet, Pudistown Regional Council recently adopted the regional housing strategy. And so in that, in that guidance, they have three areas that they have called out, uh, supplies, stability and subsidy. Again, talking about that, uh, more housing of different types and making sure that we have the right housing that people need in our community. And then creating that, uh, sustainable, long-term funding source so that we can preserve, create housing for low-income households and those that are unhoused. And finally, uh, PSRC did, does call out implementation of House Bill 1220 and providing support for that. The Snoomish County HARD or the Housing Affordability Regional Task Force, um, which we are a member, uh, the mayor sits on that committee, that, that commission, um, or task force. Also throughout that report identifies and acknowledges the need for more low-income housing with support services, and that's countywide. Next slide. We wanted to, we're going to be talking about different terms, different definitions. And so we thought it would be helpful to give you some examples of what they are. We'll start with the permanent supportive housing. You probably are all familiar with Claire's Place. That was a, a project that was done in partnership with the city. It is on city property. It's a 65-unit multifamily development. And it is housing for chronically homeless. So people in supportive, permanent supportive housing can live there uh, as long as they want to. It's not a temporary stay. It's, it's permanent housing as the, the name of the housing type suggests. Then there's also the term transitional housing, which under the state guidance is, it could be housing for up to a couple of years. So somebody that's uh, trying to transition from potentially homelessness and then, um, into more permanent, but they need some type of housing in the interim. Typically, those are any housing unit in the community and they're provided, the resident is provided with some, uh, rental assistance and also, uh, services at, at a certain level. Next slide. Then there are other, um, homeless housing projects that we wanted to talk about. We did include outdoor emergency shelter because when you, uh, when we talk about the definitions, uh, that's currently in the city code, uh, it does include these outdoors. And I am showing you here a picture of one of the, looking inside one of the pallet shelters that's down there by the Everett Gospel Miss, Mission. So those outdoor emergency shelters are really defined as the, those pallet shelter units. They could be tents like encampments and, uh, tiny home communities. They're intended to be temporary structures or units, uh, while services and permanent housing is being sought for, for those that are uh, occupying the units. For indoor emergency shelter, examples of that are the Everett Gospel Mission is the prime example. And, uh, it is overnight. And it typically, they have a 90-day program that they ask their residents to enroll in. So they're, they commit 90 days of, uh, housing to those that want to do the program. And then there are also those nightly basis shelters for the inclement weather conditions or could be that, you know, the bad, uh, air quality could also be a, a time when, when we would need those types of shelters. Indoor emergency housing, that is where, and typically right now hotels and motels are being used for that. The state defines that emergency housing as a 60-day stay. So getting somebody in, out of the cold. And it's easy to get a voucher, say for, for a hotel, the county, uh, funds many of those vouchers. Um, and they stay there while they're seeking permanent or transitional housing. So they have housing navigators that help those people try to, you know, get, get them out of the, get them out of the weather and out of outside and help them try to find more permanent place to live. Next slide. And, and lastly, I'll talk about, uh, just recent history of, uh, Everett ordinances. So in June of 2016, and some of you might've been here, we added the supportive housing definition. That was just prior to Claire's Place. Um, and it includes a number of provisions, including a management plan. Um, it was allowed in many of the zones, some with a conditional use, some with an administrative conditional use. Um, on June 19th, the council did place a moratorium on that code section specifically on the supportive housing in single-family zones. And finally, after, uh, analysis and evaluation, the council decided to remove supportive housing as a specific housing type. And so now they are just regulated as dwelling units with services. So that's the way the current code reads. Under the rethink zoning, uh, the definition of outdoor and temporary shelters was changed, uh, and it's now called group housing, group home, uh, temporary shelter. So those are kind of the history of where we are when we, Yorick gets to the specifics of the code, uh, that's kind of how we got here. And I think that's my last slide, isn't it? Yorick? Yes.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you.
So I'll, uh, walk through those, uh, recent, uh, bills that came out of the legislature that are driving the need for this code update. Obviously, uh, things are always changing, especially in the world of alleviating homelessness and, um, we'll, we'll take the opportunity to, uh, make some refinements and, and clarifications to code where we see it always dangerous. And you'll see a couple of examples of this later on to have the scope creep outwards and, uh, everything is related to everything else. So we'll try to keep this manageable, but, um, it's a, a good opportunity to at least address these state requirements and a few little things on the side. So, uh, we'll start with, uh, Senate Bill 5235. This was out of the 2021 session, so, uh, not the one that just wrapped up, but one year ago. And this is the one that, uh, except for building code or other health and safety provisions prohibits a city from limiting the number of unrelated persons that may occupy a dwelling unit. Uh, the city of Everett, uh, does limit the number of unrelated, um, uh, unrelated individuals who can occupy a dwelling unit. And I will, uh, walk you through how that works in code. We have a definition for family. And part of that definition, uh, states that a group of not more than four related and unrelated adults not to exceed a total of eight related and unrelated persons, uh, is what the definition of family is. Where do we use the definition of family? Uh, dwelling. A dwelling is one or more habitable rooms designed to be occupied by one family. So this means that in the past, if we received a complaint, uh, for code enforcement, maybe somebody noticed a lot of, uh, people coming and going regularly, a neighbor or something like that, uh, had concerns that there were a, a lot of people living in one dwelling unit, they would call the city, code enforcement would go out and investigate and, um, and, uh, take enforcement action to, uh, separate people and get the number down below eight. Now there are some, uh, uh, qualifiers to that. Uh, disability under the Americans with Disability Act, there could be some exceptions to that. And a frequent one was, uh, Oxford houses and clean and sober houses and things like that where there was a need for it. Um, but other than that, uh, we did enforce on those houses. We stopped doing so when the state law changed. So we have effectively been complying with the state law since it became effective, uh, last year. Um, but it, we're overdue in actually changing our code. So again, this, uh, this definition of dwelling, which connects to that definition I just showed with family. We also have another definition for dwelling unit. I'm not a hundred percent sure why we have those two definitions. They're in different sections of our definitions chapter. Uh, the one on top is under lot building and structure definitions. The one on bottom is residential use definitions. Uh, but I think either way, the one on top is the one that we had in the past relied on for code enforcement. Our definitions, uh, for multiple family buildings also include the term family, although, uh, one unit dwelling, and I think the two-unit and three-unit dwelling definitions also, uh, do not. So are our options going forward? Do we need a definition for family? Uh, we need to do something about this limit, uh, that we have in code for the number of unrelated occupants of a housing unit. If we do remove that definition, are there any other changes necessary? What are some of the potentially unintended consequences? Um, we may have more people living in a dwelling unit. Now, the building code still regulates, uh, and fire code regulates fire, life safety type issues. Um, uh, that should keep everybody safe in those situations and those are permitted. But, um, but there may be some other impacts and we'd love your feedback on that. Uh, Chair Finch, I see you have your, your hand up.
Thank you, Yorick. So question, I want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. With this new law, um, could I, if I, if I owned a home, um, in a single-family zone near, um, Everett Community College, for example, can I now turn that home into a, what's effectively a rooming house?
Um, that is a good question. Um, hold that in your pocket for just a second. And, um, I will get there in two slides. Uh, I, I believe so. That is, that is my interpretation. Part of, uh, your role as planning commission members is to help, um, help me think of things and help then Becky and, and other staff who are thinking through this. Different angles on it and different ways to think about it, but, uh, it, it does seem like that would effectively turn every dwelling unit in the city into a rooming house. Um, now we already allow renting out rooms within a house. We don't regulate that. Um, but it might allow for a larger number of people. If there's a very large house, it might've been limited to a bunch of empty rooms beforehand where now it could be fulfilled up. Um, so I mentioned, uh, you know, if we delete the definition of family to comply with, with this code, and that's exactly why this rooming house, uh, potential, is there anything else that we need to think of to limit kind of the, uh, the unintended consequences? The intended consequences, consequence of this is to free up more housing supply and, and get some folks into what is probably going to be affordable housing. The unintended consequences is, uh, what, what you're all here to help us figure out and mitigate to the extent that we can. So there are other place, yes?
Um, Commissioner Chatters has a question.
Oh, sure. I can't see that while I have the, the slides up. So go ahead and, uh, and either raise your hand or just speak up. But yeah, Commissioner Chatters.
Thank you. So I just wanted to be clear, um, just in my own mind. So if we remove the definition of family and all of that good stuff, there are still occupant limits, uh, imposed by fire safety as well as during the construction process, um, load per square foot, those remain, correct?
That is correct. You need to have sufficient exits and, um, I think it's pretty hard to get to the limit of number of actual human beings that are inside of a, a dwelling unit. Um, I, this, so another part of this is, uh, it's great to hear the questions that we have because then we can line up what we'll do over the next month before the next planning committee, planning commission meeting is continue to work on some proposed code language, um, and answer any questions or do the research necessary to answer those questions. Um, I, we had talked to our building official and we've gotten those answers. It was back when we were suspending enforcement of this. So this was last year and I can't remember the details of it. But I will ask, uh, Tony Lee, our building official for some of the details on what the uh, building and fire codes, uh, limit. But I do remember it being not very limiting.
Thank you.
So, um, other than the, the definition of dwelling, which is the key one, we want to make sure we're not unintentionally changing other things that we want to keep. So a word search for family in Title 19 of code brings up a few examples. Uh, the one on top there, you can work on your car at home, but only for yourself or a family member. That sounds reasonable. We'll probably want to keep that. Um, luckily the term family is defined directly within that section of code as well. So we should be good there. A bed and breakfast house limits the number of guest rooms besides the family of the operator. Uh, that might need to change. This is short-term rentals, actually. It's less than 30 days. So, uh, that, that one should be able to stay because it's not a limit on a dwelling unit. Uh, and then there are some other uses of the term that are just, uh, unrelated. A family picnic area is just using that to say really it means a picnic area. And then of course, uh, Salmonade is a member of the Fish Family, Salmonade Day, your biology, uh, lesson for this evening. So I think there are about a dozen or so other places where the word family appeared in Title 19, not as part of the word single-family or multifamily. There's about 350 of those that we, uh, had to wade through. But we'll, over the next month, be looking at each one of those to make sure that there's no unintended consequences. That does not get us out of the main project, which is, um, uh, which is what might need to be done to mitigate this change. And Commissioner Finch, uh, well, uh, well-placed question. That is my question. What is a rooming house then? We have a definition that's a structure used for the purpose of providing lodging for persons other than those under the family definition, um, for a period longer than 30 days. Uh, you will notice where rooming houses are not allowed. And that's all of those single-family zones up through an administrative use permit in the UR3 zone. Um, so in theory with this change, because you can build a dwelling unit and you can, uh, provide lodging. I don't know if lodging is the exact term that I would use for residency or, or, or a leased room rental or a portion of the house rental. But either way, it does seem like a rooming house might be a, uh, defunct definition, uh, after this code amendment. So those are the slides on this, uh, on this piece of the puzzle. Does anybody have any questions or suggestions or, uh, areas that you'd like us to research between now and a month from now? I had asked in a few, we attend meetings of other planning staff throughout the county, and I had asked what everybody was doing about this. It's been a couple of months and I didn't get any real answers. So I think the, the state's planning community is figuring out what to do with this. I'll check for updates, but, um, uh, yeah, Commissioner Finch.
So I guess to, to that point, um, it's unfortunate that the lawmakers didn't consult the state's planning community prior to, um, passing these laws. But what is the recourse? I mean, I, I don't know that, that, uh, the limits on housing options or, uh, individuals in a particular dwelling unit are arbitrary. I guess I take issue with that with that term. Um, what is the recourse for the city of Everett, um, if we want to maintain some of the definitions that run counter to uh, some of these newly passed laws?
I think it would be to go back to the legislature. So we have representatives, uh, that represent portions of the city and, um, we have a lobbyist and at the next legislative se- session. If we can point to any adverse impacts from this, we can, uh, we can do so and seek to get the law changed. Other than that, I don't know that this is unconstitutional in the way that like a court challenge could work or something like that. But I think mainly it, it's, uh, this is something that we have to do or go back to the legislature for, uh, for relief.
And, and a quick follow-on question, I guess in advance of or during the process of these laws, um, that coming to fruition, do our, um, legislatures ever reach out to you as the planning director and ask for your, your informed guidance on how they may vote or, um, some of the consequences that they might not be seeing because they're not in the planning profession?
Yeah, yes, yes. We have a lobby, a lobbyist, uh, state, um, yeah, lobbyist that works for the city. And, uh, AWC Association of Washington Cities also, all legislative session. Uh, we're constantly peppered with questions about that because these things, you know, morph and amend over time. Uh, this was in twenty twenty one, so it was before my time here. Um. But it's uh, I I I don't know that it's a given that this is a, that this is a negative thing. Yes, I can, I can see a situation that could be very difficult for a neighbor if you've got a whole bunch of people living next door and they're um, you know, noisier or parking or something like that. But then you always have to balance that with um, with the housing crisis that we're in. And I think the legislature did go into this clear ride and made a trade for uh, maybe a little bit more noise in the backyard and some parking troubles, but you know, getting a non-zero number of people potentially housed or just bringing down the, making more options available. But I'm not sure on that.
Understood, understood. I guess we'll probably talk about um, those barriers in a bit. I see uh, two other commissioners with questions. Commissioner Zalinski?
And you're muted, Commissioner, if you're speaking?
Commissioner Zalinski, I believe you're muted.
Sorry about that. Now you can hear me?
Yes.
Yes, so two questions. Uh, you mentioned the Association of Washington Cities, and I'm wondering if they are weighing in on this question or are you aware that there's conversations about them weighing in? Because that would be the way to go, I would say. And the second, the second question is, um, assuming we do have to work with the state law, there's like four different types of emergency housing terms that are used. And I'm wondering if the state law has definitions in that, and if so, then we probably need to adopt those as part of our definitions too, I would guess.
Yep, so we'll turn to that uh, we'll turn to that topic right after we're finished with this one. Uh, as to your original question or your first question, um, I have not heard much on this topic at all for for a year. So I will check in and do some some uh, some checking in with fellow planners around the county and the region and A W C, but uh, it's been pretty quiet, so maybe it wound up being a non-issue. Um, or maybe something else.
Thank you, Commissioner Zalinski. Commissioner Ballard?
Yeah, uh, just want to add on, I mean, to me, the the safety would be the issue and and trying to figure out some kind of reasonableness. Um, and I, you know, I guess, and my question is, I don't trying to figure out the spirit of the law. I mean, what, you know, what were they trying to solve? Just trying to get more people into housing. And there must have been a community, I mean, there must have been some argument or logic on this, on how they thought it would work well. I'm just wondering how to meet that better, other than just completely removing it and having no limit, so.
So in your packets, um, I think there's a list of the recent state legislation and all of the blue words in the packets are links. And so you can go to the link. I'll I'll try to do this uh, if I have time, but you can go to the link for Senate Bill fifty-two thirty-five, and then you'll have the whole kind of history of it, the amendments, uh, bill reports along the way. Uh, some of the bill reports, look for a Senate bill report, and typically they'll have arguments and uh organizations that testified pro and against, and you can even watch public hearings and everything. I sort of remember when this was going around, but um, uh, I think it was a housing, a a housing initiative. Uh, we are in a housing crisis, uh, statewide, pretty much, and um, I think there were some some uh advocates that saw this as a way to make a dent in that and to um, you know, at the end of the day, maybe prevent a a few people from becoming homeless because I got to imagine that renting a room is cheaper than renting an entire dwelling unit. Um, now, you know, students and uh, folks that that don't need it will also take advantage of it. Uh, but that, that's my thought about how it happened.
Thank you. And again, I I'm supportive of getting more people into the housing. Um, I'm just a little the the afterthought is, how do we just make sure that it stays safe?
It's hard. This this uh, the the work that we have to do has to anticipate all sorts of possible uh, possible outcomes in advance, right? Because once we hear about a problem, it's a long lead time before we can fix it. So we'll have to, you know, use our imaginations and and think through the implications of this and within. You know, you see here, we're allowed lawful limits on load per square foot or generally applicable health or safety provisions, and I think we're in good shape with all of that. Um, but uh, yeah, we'll have to imagine what what might be an issue and staff will continue to do that over this next month, too.
Thank you, Commissioner Ballard. Any additional question? Okay, thank you.
All right, on to the next one. So House Bill twelve twenty touched on two issues. Uh, one of them was a city shall not prohibit indoor emergency shelters and indoor emergency housing in any zones in which hotels are allowed. Um, there are terminology is like the name of the game for this briefing here. There are so many different terms that are defined slightly different. Uh, and even wrapping this up into one title for the agenda item was uh, difficult for us, but so here we've got an indoor emergency shelters and indoor emergency housing. Here are the definitions uh, in state law. Emergency housing is temporary indoor accommodations for individuals or families who are homeless or almost so. Emergency shelter is temporary shelter for individuals or families who are currently uh, are currently homeless. So the difference is urgency shelter does not include folks who are at imminent risk of becoming homeless, but emergency housing does. And they're both temporary. Neither one necessarily requires a lease. Um. And Becky, feel free to jump in. Becky knows this topic well, too. So if I'm missing a nuance on these definitions, uh, you let me know.
Yeah, no, I think I think you've got that right, where where emergency housing says may or may not, you know, have a lease written, and then the shelter is not in shelters are typically.
Oh, may not require. Gotcha. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. So lining up those two definitions on the left from state law with the definition that we have for group housing temporary shelter on the right. There are a lot of similarities. Both say temporary, both include uh shelter. Our definition talks about sponsor and managing agency. Um, and then I'll highlight a couple of differences. Urgency shelter on the state law side includes day and warming centers that do not provide overnight accommodations. Our definition does not. I believe that we would classify a day or a warming center as a social service facility. That is a facility that uh provides social or human services to persons needing such services. And then our our definition of group housing temporary shelter includes the outdoor shelter uh, types, including temporary building encampments, safe parking areas, outdoor encampments or vehicle residence, safe parking for the homeless and temporary tiny house encampments. I believe this was an ad from Rethink zoning. So again, reminder of the new requirement, if hotels are allowed, then emergency shelters and emergency housing must be allowed. Here is a excerpt from our use matrix. Um. And so where we are not uh, not fully compliant with state law would be in the light industrial zones. We allow hotels and motels. We do not allow group housing temporary shelter. Uh, you'll see there's a couple of reference notes there. What do those mean? Um. We have the eight for some reason under light industrial, so they're doubly prohibited on TOD and pedestrian streets. You can't build one anyways, but certainly not if it's a TOD or pedestrian street. Um, number nine brings in uh, another state law that uh, that we're already consistent with. I think we folded this in in Rethink zoning that allows um, religious organizations to host the homeless inside or outside of buildings. So we do allow for that, even though it's it's marked as prohibited in the use matrix. If it is in a religious organization controlled property, then it is allowed because state law preempts the city. And then uh, shelters for persons experiencing domestic violence are allowed as a permitted use without a requirement for notice. But in general, it is uh prohibited. And we would need to do something about that. We'd kick out hotels and motels from the light industrial zone. Uh, or we could uh, allow group housing and temporary shelter. Now, going back to the definition where our group housing temporary shelter includes the outdoor types, the state law does not require us to allow the outdoor types, so um, if we were to do so, and note that uh, Becky showed a picture of the pallet housing that's at the Everett Gospel Mission, and that is a uh, an outdoor encampment. You would think it is prohibited in the light industrial zone where it's located, but that is on property controlled by a religious organization is why that is there. So uh, either remove hotels, motels, or add group housing temporary shelter, recognizing that we would also bring in that outdoor encampment uh, piece or split the definition into and be more tailored with a couple of options there. Any questions about this part?
Yeah.
The other part of this bill uh, addresses transitionals. Oh, yes, sorry.
Thank you. So when you say disallow hotels or motels, are there hotels or motels operating in those zones that would be impacted? Or are we talking about future development?
Future development. I don't know of any hotels, motels in the industrial zone, but even if they were there and we removed it as a permitted use, it would be allowed to continue to operate as a uh, non-conforming use. Now, that still makes it difficult to expand and remodel and things like that, so we don't like making things non-conforming uses if we can avoid it. Uh, but either way, to my, to my knowledge, there are not any existing hotels or motels in the light industrial zone.
Thank you.
And we're coordinating all of this with our human, um, our community development uh, department. Um, we have a new homelessness coordinator uh, that just uh, joined on with the city a month or two ago or a few months ago, as time flies by. Um, and so we're going to make sure that we have a good uh, knowledge on what our needs are and where the right places might be. So it's not going to be all on uh, you and and Becky and I to figure this out. Um, and we'll share that feedback with you next month as well. So the other piece is transitional housing and permanent supportive housing, and those must be required wherever dwelling units or hotels are allowed. Reasonable occupancy spacing and intensity of use requirements may be imposed to protect public health and safety. And I also want to direct your attention down to um this part here. Uh, cities projected needs for such housing and shelter under the Growth Management Act. And this is just a reminder, and we have some collaborative working groups with the county and the state that we're working on. But as part of the comprehensive plan periodic update process, we are going to need to come up with numbers of expected need for uh, transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, emergency shelters, and a few other categories of uh, of kind of special needs housing as uh, for the twenty year planning period. So this will be a piece of work where we'll have to figure out how many uh, permanent supportive housing units are we going to need in the city of Everett over the twenty year period and then work to provide the capacity for that. Chair Finch?
So with the approval or or the um, yeah, the approval views for transitional housing or permanent supportive housing in any residential zone, um, does that also mean that there's no limit on the density of occupants? Is that a, am I, am I combining two concepts? It should not be combined, or is that effectively where we've landed with these two things?
Becky, don't we limit the number of occupants to the underlying density or the comp plan? And but uh, we only specify minimum density or maximum density for some zones.
I'm talking about occupants, not dwelling units.
I think.
That would be correct, I think, but if we can't limit the number of occupants in any case, other than through uh, life safety issues and building codes.
And I think that it's, it's probably reasonable to assume that that's a difficult limitation, given that, I think we collectively agree that even um uh, administering uh, ownership requirements for ADUs is challenging, given the staff limitations. So to think that someone's going to go in and and really monitor um, floor loading, for example, is um, probably not realistic. Um, and I, you know, back to Commissioner Ballard's comment and and thinking about kind of two different concepts here. One is the housing crisis and uh, levels of affordability. And two is um, the need to address the homeless situation, which is, which is a very complex and multifaceted uh, issue. It it only looks like these laws are addressing um, buildings or or beds or dwelling units. They're not addressing the wraparound services that um, that effectively um, you know, address the other elements of homelessness that are not related to uh, affordability and availability.
Yeah, and it's, it's possible we wouldn't see them in planning, the service side. Um, because those typically get related to um, funding for those types of services or uh, in another department even, um, at the state level. Um, so it is expected that both transitional housing and permanent supportive housing will have some component of services that that get offered. So I, but I don't know that I could assume that they haven't addressed any of the service side. It's just, we might not see that. And that could be a good question that we could um, bring forward next month when we um, talked with our community development group.
Yeah, I think that would be great because I, when when we think about, you know, our code and for example, the need to have a a management plan surrounding certain uses. Um, obviously, that's in, you know, title nineteen, and and that relates to those services that we're talking about. And so I guess that asking that question would be good. Uh, because it's, I think it's important for these, you know, if we are going to welcome um, these different uh, use types into what seems to be any zone at this point. Um, it would be good if they were um, as effective as possible. So surrounded by the the services that uh, make those dwelling units uh, effective, um, nearby frequent transit, not just within a mile of transit. I mean, a lot of things are within a mile of transit, but if we don't speak to the level of service, um, you know, or uh, make it closer than one mile, if someone's in in crisis, I think one mile doesn't quite do it. Um, I think those are the kinds of things that would be good to look at in the context of also evaluating this new language. Uh, Commissioner McGinn?
Hi, um, I I have one question. Um, I'm kind of struggling to grasp. It's uh, seems a little bit nebulous, this um, number of emergency or temporary units or shelters specifically. Um. Is this something that the state plans to um? Do they plan to task each community um, in the same way that it has tasked communities um, for accommodating targets for market rate housing? Do we, will we be assigned a very uh, specific target for number of units or number of beds um, that we can expect to plan for, or is this just a very broad shot in the dark um, that we're just, it it feels a little bit like we're we're casting a very large net and we don't, we don't have a a plan.
Well, luckily, there's a requirement to create a plan, although it's, it will not be easy. So we uh, uh, Becky and I were in the first meeting of a series with the state uh, hosted by the State Department of Commerce. So this is statewide. So every county, most of the counties and cities in the state are dealing with this. Uh, they are preparing um, assistance at a statewide replicable methodology to estimate the need for the list of housing types that is in that uh, state law down at the bottom of the screen there. And uh, it will be done consistently throughout the state, an estimated need by county. So Stahomish County. So Stahomish County will receive an estimated, through a collaborative methodology, an estimated number of permanent supportive housing units that will be needed for the twenty-year period. And then how we distribute that to cities. It's not going to be a hard and fast requirement, kind of like the growth targets are, at least at this phase. Although we do think our comprehensive plan has a policy calling for affordable housing targets countywide. The countywide planning policies sort of do, but, but don't have that. But anyways, there will be support and there will be a number, but I don't, it's not going to be a prescriptive number that we will have to go out demonstrate, but we will have to demonstrate that we are reasonably planning for our needs. The land for these facilities and all that is, is often less difficult than the financing and the service providers and everything. The whole ecosystem that supports this, and that's obviously going to take time to sort out. But there will be support from the state and then also the county. Stahomish County is staffing a project driven by the countywide planning policies called the H O five report. Housing Countywide Planning Policy Number Five, which calls for a housing characteristics and needs analysis countywide. And that should provide some support for our analysis as well. And then finally, that Hart Housing Affordability Regional Task Force process may play some role in supporting this as well. So everybody's trying to figure this out as well, and hopefully it will lead to a more effective process, coordinated and effective process, but it is, that is not easy.
Thank you very much. That, that does clarify. I, I think for me, these are the broad strokes, and I'm not missing anything right now. This is, thank you.
I think so. It's a journey and we're on it together. Okay, so we were at a city shall not prohibit transitional or permanent supportive housing where dwelling units or hotels are allowed. The state has a definition in Title eighty-four. Transitional housing is up to two years and is facilitating movement of homeless persons and families into independent living. I think if we saw a permit come in for one of these, we would call it a dwelling unit. And so we would permit it where dwelling units are allowed. Permanent supportive housing, this is out of Title thirty-six within the Growth Management Act section. Subsidized leased housing, no limit on length of stay, prioritizes comprehensive support services to retain tenancy, lower barriers paired with onsite or offsite voluntary services. Support a person living with a complex and disabling behavioral health or physical health condition. Claire's Place was the example that we have in the city for that. And here's the use matrix. So we would regulate under our current system. We would regulate permanent supportive housing is the combination of a dwelling unit and the services. The services would be under this definition of offices, clinic, social or human service facility and community services. I think something's going to light up there. And so unless we really hang our hat on the offsite services thing, and I'm not sure that that would work. What we're looking at here is needing to extend the, the allowance for social or human service facilities to the U R three and the U R four zone. Didn't stretch the rectangle any farther to the left because it just doesn't seem reasonable that permanent supportive housing would occur within a townhouse or a house or a duplex. It's just not at the scale that would make sense for the model. Somebody might quibble with that, but, but that's, that's our assumption right now. To make sure that we don't have, if it's not appropriate to do so, standalone social or human service facilities in these residential zones. We could have a footnote that restricted it to residents of the building that's within it. So I think those are all of the state law driven changes. We also just noticed, I mentioned earlier, potentially separating the indoor shelters from outdoor shelters and safe parking and whatnot. There's a lot of requirements connected to the outdoor shelter options. Procedural and substantive, and they, that's all in Exhibit C, EMC nineteen oh eight dot two hundred. Says it's for group housing temporary shelter, but then in the first section, it says it's only applicable to the outdoor ones. We may want to lift some of these requirements for the indoor ones. You mentioned managing agency and a management plan. I think that's something that city staff agrees would be a good component of any of these kind of special needs housing facilities. We want to make sure that we retain control of some sort if things are not going well, to be able to intervene. And there may be some aspects to the code requirements, conditional uses, conditions, management plan requirements, those sorts of things. There's a curious curiosity in the permit type for the group housing temporary shelters in the business in the M U zone. It's a conditional use permit if there are twelve or fewer persons, but an administrative conditional use permit, which is a lower level of scrutiny, does not go to the hearing examiner. If it's a larger one, couldn't figure out why the larger one would be easier to cite than a smaller one. Maybe that was an accident, but we'll take a look at that. And then we had those two definitions for supportive housing. I don't see why that is necessary, we could combine those two. So, and then other little sort of cleanup things that we may see. So those are kind of the things we were thinking. Don't have clear direction. We'll need to consult with our other departments, our mayor. And then we'll come back to you next month with hopefully some clear code language. Work that with you and then the month after that, come back for a public hearing and a recommendation to the city council for the summer.
Great. Thank you, Yor. Thank you, Becky. Any additional questions from commissioners? Okay, you're getting off easy, guys.
I, I like that that was actually folded into the presentation. I know it's hard to hold questions all the way to the end and remember what they were. So thank you and for future, future reference, that at least for me is, I appreciate that style.
Well, thank you. Any, any comments from the public? I know that's not on the agenda, but I understand there may be others that have joined. Or maybe they've already left. Okay. Just one final thing. Is it possible, in an effort to kind of advance transparency, is it possible to keep the presentations from tonight on the Planning Commission website as well as going forward? I understand they may not be available in advance of the, the meetings, but I think it's important to have those available for folks that may not be able to attend, to have those materials to reference.
I agree, certainly. I think we have, we have, and for some of them, we'll make sure that all the presentations are available as well as the recording. I, I received word that the recording or the, the transmission on the Everett channel did get back up. I'm not sure if it was delayed and fully available or if the beginning was chopped off. But either way, we'll make sure that the full recording is available on YouTube, I think it is. So both of those, good, good comment, good requests, and we're all about transparency.
This, this project will have its own project page. So we will get that up and running and provide that link to the commissioners as well.
Great. All right. Thanks, everyone. Meeting is adjourned.